It's on now, okay. Call the meeting to order. If you please rise. Invocation by Supervisor Bishop.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We thank you for our great country and we ask your divine wisdom for our leaders here today. May we be given the wisdom and courage in the decisions that we make. We ask that you guide and direct our meetings so that it's full of productivity and respect for one another. We pray to use in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to the Arizona revised statutes. All right. Chair would entertain a motion. Call for an executive session to be held on May 7th, 2018 at 9:00 AM for the discussion, consultation with legal counsel in accordance with the Arizona revised statutes.
I'm moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. This morning, we're going to deviate somewhat from our regular agenda and we'll now have the presentation from the Employee Benefit Trust and at 10:00 AM, we have an auction. So, Mr. Aaron Collins.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Aaron Collins and the President of Aaron Collins Associates. Our firm has been honored to provide consulting services to Mojave County Employee Benefits Trust for a number of years. The trust document requires that an annual report be presented to the board of the operations of the trust and practice, the board gets through its staff, gets monthly reports. So today, I'm going to do this, a fairly brief overview, just the high points of the last two years of the trust's performance and then we'll take a look going forward. And with the chair's permission, I'll be happy to answer any questions as I go and at the end. Okay, if you take a look at the first slide, Mojave County's been self-funded on its employee benefit plan for probably north of 15 years. And if you remember from prior presentations, its performance is strikingly predictable, is the words I chose to use. It tends to look like a bunch of mountains and valleys, but it's remarkable how regular they are. And the trust has been funded in a way that seeks to stabilize that. Years and years ago, the county had a problem with the trust, that it ran and that it tended to run very low volumes of money and so when things got bad, it would really be disruptive to the county's operations. I'm very happy to report that we've established a target position of cash in the trust to avoid that kind of disruption to operations and it's been highly successful. The last two years, the trust's results have been particularly solid. The 2016-17 year, you'll remember the trust working with the board of supervisors and the county staff authorized, I think, believe it was a half a million dollar premium holiday. So with that, we saw the trust balance decrease from nine to eight point two million dollars. The current year has been remarkably solid. We're tracking currently to end the year about a half a million dollars to the good and that's after having taken into consideration a one point five million dollar premium holiday. But we're up two million year-to-date. I know that's kind of a little bit wishy-washy, but at the end of the year, we're looking to be about a half a million dollars ahead again. So two fantastic years back-to-back. Going forward, looking at 2018-2019, we're going to hold the rates flat, essentially at a zero for internal funding purposes, but for purposes of COBRA premiums, that's the premiums people pay when they leave and continue the coverage on their own. We're going to increase the rates by four point six percent. Again, a lot of numbers, Mr. Chair members, but what they all point to is a very well-funded trust and one that's operating very well to the county's benefits. Looking forward, very minor benefit changes this year. Run through those really quickly. We're going to be dropping hearing aid coverage. This is actually a request from staff. The benefit was well-intended, but in practice, based on billing practices, has proved to actually create more issues for employees than it solved. Specific vendors in the areas with their billing practices, they would agree to a discount and not take it, try to bill employees, just turned into a nightmare. We felt we were creating a trap in some, to some degree, so we eliminated the benefit. Replace the $500 annual wellness benefit with one where any screening that is bought on-site is at no cost to the participant. Terminating an experiment we did two years ago, the thing called Healthcare Blue Book. This was an online resource that gave employees a chance to pre-pick providers of healthcare based on price and quality, but frankly, we just didn't get utilization. So rather than continue to spend the money, we dropped it. And then a minor technical change, we removed a deductible credit for movement between the High Deductible Health Plan and the EPO, the Exclusive Provider Organization. Looking ahead, last year, we implemented a program called Teladoc. This is a way to give employees a 24/7 access by telephone, by computer, and by smartphone to physicians for very light-use items and it's intended for two things. One, there is not a good 24-hour access other than the emergency room. So this gives people a low-cost, high-quality physician-based service that runs about 40 bucks a visit, keeps them out of the ERs, gives them a way to get prescriptions other than controlled substances, is really good. So we're going to do some promotions to keep getting people registered so they can use it more readily. And on the wellness program, we're going to continue, and I'll get into this in greater detail in a minute, we're going to continue those promotion activities based on the data for the county. And I emphasize that because you may remember from a prior presentation with the board that the county has very specific areas that drive its claims, breast cancer, diabetes, some specific medications, and we're targeting those through the wellness activities. And what I put in here is just a note that says, wellness is a numbers game. The higher the participation of the targeted groups, the better, the more effective it is. And that has been our challenge and that's actually an area of focus going forward. How do we get higher numbers of people to actually participate in the programming? So if you look at this, this screen actually summarizes the challenge that we saw in the current year. We've, so far, we've done four specific types of screenings, a healthy heart blood draw intended to give people information on their cardiac health, mammograms, and this is only onsite, the ones we rolled on, prostate onsite project, and a general health risk assessment. And when you consider the county workforce is ballpark in the range of 1,000-plus employees, these are actually very low numbers. The only one that's understated in here is the mammogram because that only includes the on-sites, it doesn't include women who went for mammography at brick-and-mortar facilities or other providers. Our goal is to get all of these considerably up over the coming period and I'll walk into how we're looking to do that because each one of these is a cost driver for Mojave County today. So when you think about the peaks and the valleys, these are items that are creating the peaks. What's happening on that is we have a group that's, that has been set up, and it's actually a continuation of one the county had set up prior to our coming onboard, but we have wellness program coordinators, these are the key folks that come together about roughly quarterly. And you can see the names, so Karen Otto from HR here in Kingman, Karen Flanagan from the Board of Supervisors in Bullhead, Robbie Parks with Quartz and Havasu, and Valerie Winters from Quartz and Kingman. And then beneath them, we have a series of department reps we're looking to expand. So Anna Williams, Amanda Simmons, and Becky Fawcett. And these folks, really basically what they're there to do is distribute information and get feedback on what works in terms of getting participation. And you can see also, we're hoping to get some representation from Public Works, the Sheriff's Office, things like that. What we have found is frankly, there's still confusion as to who gets the information and how it's used. And actually Jenny Anderson and Valerie, when we did the renewal meeting, had some really specific questions that never dawned on us. You know, there's a release that says, hey, we're going to gather this information, we're going to use it. And people thought we were sitting there flipping through it going, no, look, look who's so-and-so's got going on. So we need to make sure that information gets out, that people understand their specific data's never seen, but that the data is used to make sure they're getting appropriate follow-up care by nurses elsewhere in the program. So I'd say look forward to it. Mike, by the way, was really helpful, got us in to walk through the same numbers the board has seen with the senior staff, both elected and appointed people, we sat in this room and took them through it, just constantly educating, hey, guys, you're all having interest in this thing. It drives your health costs, it drives your ability to recruit and retain, drives the personal health of yourself and your neighbors and your colleagues. Slow slog, but starting to see some light at the end of the tunnel. The screenings that are done, that we've done already this year, the ones that are in brackets, so we've done skin cancer, we've done cardiac and organ, we've done prostate onsite program, and we have a healthy heart blood draw again in August and the flu and pneumonia in October and mammogram. So this will take us through the end of the calendar year and we'll be working with those groups and also with Mike and his department heads to continue to get that participation increased. One that we are very excited about, we're kicking off in July, is a program called Levango and it's specifically targeted at diabetes disease state management. It's one of the single largest cost drivers in the county's medical plan, north of a half a million dollars a year today. And what this does at no cost to employees is provide them with a cell tower activated glucose meter and unlimited test strips, then access to a support network to make sure that they're actually drawing and monitoring their glucose levels. And as boring as that sounds, if diabetes remains uncontrolled, the effect on kidneys, liver, excuse me, kidneys, heart, extremities, and frankly, life are progressive, progressively worse. So this is directed at actually targeting that. We'll be getting information out through Ken and Karen and his folks. And at the end of the day, the entire program is all these words that we hear all the time, but educate, empower, motivate, self-care. The concept is each one of us is ultimately responsible for our own health and we want to support that. So the people do take ownership for it, give them information, give them resources. We want to do those onsite screenings for the things like breast cancer, prostate cancer, skin cancer, flu and pneumonia, do those things onsite so we can head them off or catch them early. And at the end of the day, for everybody, for you as an organization, the county, for the trust you set up under state law and for your individual employees, we're going to try and bend that cost curve. I would tell you that as much grief as all of you get as elected officials for everything that goes wrong, whether real or imagined, this trust is probably one of the silent successes that none of us sees as taxpayers. You've run it, this board and successive boards before you have funded it and run it well, and I would tell you it's one of the success stories that I wish more people knew about. So Mr. Chair members, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Collins?
Not really a question, but a comment. I've had the honor of being the chairman of the EBD Trust since I've taken office and it's been one of the most interesting things I think I do. And I get to see this, I get to see the numbers and how we are as a, as a community. And I want to thank Mr. Collins and Karen Otto for working very, very hard on behalf of the employees of Mojave County. I'm proud to say that, you know, we haven't raised rates, we haven't taken away benefits, we've given more benefits. During these annual meetings, we're given many different ideas of things that we could offer and we have to go through them and decide, you know, what we want to do and what we don't. Then we come back the next year, see if it works or if it doesn't, like the Blue Book. And it's been, it's been a good ride and I'm very proud of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair members.
Excellent job.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Supervisor Johnson, yes.
Thank you, sir. I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Collins. Mostly our procedure. Karen Otto does get a lot of information out, so that helps an awful lot with our people. One of them is a special meeting was just called a short time after the regularly scheduled board meeting. Can you tell me why that meeting was called?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Johnson, that meeting was called to address the presence and the level of participation of the Mayo Clinic in the Blue Cross Network statewide. Mayo Clinic is in the Blue Cross Network today for a very specific number of solid organ transplants. Blue Cross had expanded or offered members, employers releasing its network, the ability to throw Mayo in for all services. We considered that with the trust and considered the financial impact of that in light of the fact that many of the services that are available at Mayo are also available elsewhere in the state and at lower cost. And the decision was made not to add the Mayo Clinic to the broader network, to leave it in its current level, which is for those solid organ transplants. So that was the vote that was held at that meeting.
That sounds good. I understand that they didn't get the backup out to all the voting members. Hopefully, we can get that done next time so they can at least have a chance to look at it before they do it. I guess the other thing that's something we might look at is we're having vendors who have contracts with us pay for luncheons, refreshments, et cetera. And I don't know, I would think we should take a look to see if there's a conflict. And the last thing I had, it would be nice because while the members all get to see everything you do and everything that's offered, it's hard for the employees to see it because I'll get questions, I'm sure other people do, on benefits, which I obviously refer them to Karen Otto, but if it's possible, if we could show those meetings in our boardroom, it would, it would help a lot with the people. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, thank you.
Very good. We have a few, few more, Matt, about 10 minutes? Six minutes. We'll move on to discussion pending and contemplation litigation and claim. Mr. Esplin?
Nothing to report to the board.
Great. Committee or legislative reports? Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything in six minutes?
Nothing in six minutes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you. I don't have anything to add other than I've been active with the County Supervisors Association as the legislative liaison, so with those duties, I've been fairly busy.
Very busy. Supervisor Angus?
I talked last time about the opening of Dot Foods, a business that we had a big part in bringing here, and we had the grand opening and they brought in a videographer and they put together this really wonderful, it's only about two minutes and I think 13 seconds and I have it queued up. Do we have time? It was a great day and if you notice in the video, it said that they have already hired 125 people, which is ahead of what we, we had anticipated, what we asked for via our contract. So they're only going to be expanding more and expanding size-wise in the future.
Yes, I understand that they've exceeded already each and every step that was required in the economic development agreement. So that's great. Congratulations to your district and the community and Dot Food. Supervisor Wakamoto, you've been a busy lady with all your meetings and travels with your water issues. Would you like to give a short couple of minutes?
Well, we went down to the CAP board meeting last Thursday. Chairman Watson and I, and we spoke on behalf of Mojave County to give our views of what we felt was fair and that was to leave our water alone. We gave them alternatives as to there was other options for them other than
On my part, on March 19th, 2018, during the call to the public, beginning at minute 48, Mr. Michael Boone of Lake Havasu City stated, and I quote, "Recently, at a Board of Supervisors meeting, I believe Cindy Cox was asked by Board of Supervisor Johnson if she had provided the Board of Supervisors for the past three years a list of deed sales, and she replied she had. I filed a records request and discovered that those documents had not been provided to the Board of Supervisors as she had said that she did." Mr. Boone went on to say, and I paraphrase now, "Elected officials are exempt from ordinance 213-03 crafted by then Supervisor Moss. I heard the implication that I had lied to the Board because I am exempt from this ordinance. I wanted to thank Mr. Boone first for bringing this to the Board and my attention. I commend him for speaking the truth and asking questions. I believe the call to the public is a perfect venue for making these kind of statements. I would, however, like to clarify, to answer and clarify my actions and spoken words. First, the word "lie" is defined by the Merriam-Webster Dictionary as 'to make an untrue statement with the intent to deceive.' I didn't lie. I did not intend to deceive Supervisor Johnson or anyone else. I answered Supervisor Johnson's question with what I believe to be the truth. I discussed this with our delinquent tax specialist later and found I was wrong. My office does not provide a list of deed sales to the Board of Supervisors. My office does not provide a list of eligible parcels for the deed sale to the Board of Supervisors. I apologize for any issues or misunderstandings that arose from my statements. I was absolutely wrong. I did not immediately bring this back to the Board when I found this out because I believed that this list was superfluous, a superfluous error unrelated to the issue at hand, which is resuming the tax deed sale which happened." That said, I'd like to point out that the statutes are quite clear on this issue. ARS 42-18301 declares in Section A, "On or before the first Monday in November of each year, the County Board of Supervisors shall prepare a list of the real property in the county that is held by the state by tax deed." That list has been in the supervisors' hands since 2008 and has not changed. These are simply parcels that were deeded. The Treasurer's Office is not responsible to post a list or prepare a list and forward it to the Board unsolicited. The tax deed sale is handled, driven, and authorized by the Board. The culmination of many issues and our driving forces that led to me bringing the tax deed sale to the Board. Analyzing deficiencies and shifts in the economy... Can I have another minute? Thank you. "Analyzing deficiencies and shifts in the economy in an effort to be an efficient and effective department, I saw a trend of delinquencies with their trajectory that would be impossible to manage. And I wanted to make the Board aware that my opinion, in my opinion, the tax deed sale process should be resumed. The decision to move forward with the tax deed sale is solely at the discretion of the Board." This is to say that over and over again, the statutes refer to the Board of Supervisors' tax deed sale falls under the authority of the Board of Supervisors. However, I am aware that my office handles and maintains the information that is required to provide the necessary support to the Board to conduct the Board of Supervisors' tax deed sale. I would hope that my record has shown that I respect the Board of Supervisors by addressing past concerns in an expeditous manner, listening to what I have been requested do, complete said tasks, and I continue to perform and provide information to all divisions, districts in the county, state, local authorities, and city agencies, including the Board of Supervisors, with support requested. Thank you for allowing me to clarify this. Again, I apologize for being completely wrong. I look forward to working with the Board on any issue, concern, or item. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Cox. Eva Corbett?
I'm going to speak at 33.
Okay. Royanne Ortiz?
Board members, my name is Royanne Ortiz. I live at 1550 Mona Vista Drive in Bullhead City. And I'm... Wanted to speak to item number 10 on the consent agenda, which has to do with janitorial services for the Lake Havasu City courts. It's my understanding that they had a pre-proposal conference on March 1st. However, nothing in the documentation provided told me who attended that proposal, that pre-proposal meeting. And I find this of concern since only one bid was received. And considering it's janitorial services, and having looked at the proposal and the requirements of the proposal, if I owned a janitorial service, I wouldn't have bid on it either. And then come to find out on March 6th, after the pre-proposal conference, significant changes were made to the requirements of the proposal. And, but the opening, the closing date for a receipted proposal remained the same despite the fact that there were significant changes. So my request is that I get a copy of those who attended the pre-proposal conference. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak? The call to the public. There being none, then we will continue on then to the consent agenda, items 5 through 36. Supervisor Johnson, do you have any items you wish to pull from the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. 24, 28, 34.
24, 28, and 34. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Supervisor Bishop?
I have none.
Supervisor Angus?
Eva Corbett wanted to speak to 33.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
None.
And I will... What I was going to pull is already identified. So we have the consent agenda, items 35, or items 5 through 36, with the exception of 24, 28, 33, and 34. Chair would entertain a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion for approval on the consent agenda, items 5 through 36, with the exception of 24, 28, 33, and 34. And a second. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 24. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just curious. It looks like it stops thoroughfare from going through, and that's what my concern was. Maybe Supervisor Bishop would have a better explanation or Public Works.
I'll defer to Public Works on that.
Okay. Mr. Otowski?
Good morning, Chairman Watson, the members of the Board. Supervisor Johnson, this item concerning the extinguishment of an easement, ingress and egress easement for Yaki Drive. What happens is it bisects property completely controlled by the applicant in this instance. And as a result, Public Works carefully examined the implications of the easement-extinguishment and find that the adjacent street, notably Pima Road, which is east of Yaki Road, actually is the appropriate thoroughfare for traffic coming off of Dawson Drive. So this, in Public Works' view, has no undue impact on the motoring public in the area.
Does that answer your question, Supervisor Johnson?
I guess Supervisor Bishop's area, I just saw it shut off that access there. So I know we're always trying to get more and more access. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 218-044 to extinguish the 60-foot wide by 1,288-foot-long Yaki Road easement in Golden Valley.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 28, set a public hearing for the debate, discussion, adoption of amendments to Mojave County's anti-littering ordinance for the purpose of adding and clarifying the Erase Reward Program, reporting illegal dumping to the ordinance, and to make changes by definition of litter generator. This is to set a public hearing. Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Johnson, I believe this is the item that you pulled?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I had the few button pushed. I might be getting ahead of myself. Mr. Esslin can jump in if I am, but everything I'm reading, it keeps saying that we're going to add, the erase, may advertise, or pay the reward. I thought this was something that we're offering the reward if somebody turns somebody in and they're convicted of a crime. I just like the word "may."
Okay. This is to set the public hearing. I'm sure we can have that discussion at the public hearing.
That's correct.
Sounds good to me.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Supervisor Johnson?
No, that sounded good to me. Thank you, Mr. Esslin. I just wanted to get it out there.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Would you make a motion then to set that public hearing?
So may.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set the public hearing. Item number 28. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 33, accept non-monetary donations in the amount of $3,577.78 received from the Mojave County K-9 Foundation to the K-9 program for the Mojave County Sheriff's Office. This item was pulled by Supervisor Angus.
I believe that Eva Corbett wanted to speak to this.
We will let Ms. Corbett speak to this along with the Sheriff.
Thank you, members of the Board. I'm Eva Corbett from Bullhead City. The Sheriff's coming down to join me. My husband Gary Corbett and I have been raising funds for the Canines since about six years ago. We've been having fundraisers and we've helped out. And then last year, we got the good news that the K-9 Foundation was formed, which means that it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And these are some of the things that we do. We raise money for the Canines to provide food, supplies, medical treatment, and other things that the Canines need. The medical treatment is very important, that these animals become, are healthy and happy. And we provide safety officers for different events. And also, I wanted to tell you that they've been doing a great job coming out and giving education to the public about what the Canines are capable of doing. So don't try to outrun a K-9, okay? And I want to thank the Sheriff for all his support and know that we love you, and we will do everything we can to make this foundation wonderful for you.
Thank you, Eva. A few words from me. Good morning, Chairman Watson, members of the Board. This has been a fantastic program for the Sheriff's Office. As you're aware, we don't have budgeted funding for our K-9 Division. When I took office, we had zero Canines. Through a group of fantastic citizens with their dedication and support, we now have five Canines on the street in various areas throughout Mojave County, and the program is excelling at a rapid rate. They're raising a fantastic amount of funding for us. And I would like to go on the record to say that I personally am thanking the Mojave County Sheriff's K-9 Foundation for all their support.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Any questions for the Sheriff and the program? Only accolades. Thank you very much.
Chairman Watson, I'm making a motion that we approve item 33 as noted.
We have a motion to accept the non-monetary donation?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. On to item 34, approve the report of routine personnel actions taken during the pay period of March 17, 2018 through March 30, 2018. I believe this item was withdrawn by Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm only interested in the clerk of the board race, so I'd make a motion to approve the item minus the clerk of the board race first.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion? I think we need clarification on the question. I don't think...
I believe he made a motion to approve the item with the exception of the one designation of grade 132, Admin Assistant Secretary-Elect Clerk of the Board. That's the motion. Motion?
The motion is to...
Approve.
Accept it without that?
Exactly.
Okay. So this is Supervisor Johnson's way of telling me that he doesn't approve of me giving my administrative assistant a raise, which I did. I believed that the supervisors have sole discretion over their budgets. And I decided that I was gonna, I didn't take any money from general fund. I moved some money. I gave back money last year. I'm going to give back money this year. But if Supervisor Johnson has an issue with that, I wish he had come to talk to me about it. Because here's the deal. Every, ever since we took office, and I think historically, the supervisors decide what kind of help they need in their respective offices. We're all kind of different. There are offices up here that have different help around them. I know myself and Supervisor Johnson are kind of similar in that we have, we are in county offices in our respective cities, right? So they're more of, a bit more of an office manager, because we don't have a lot of the services they have there. And that District 5 has two offices in different areas. So some of us have one person helping us, some of us have two people helping us. And I find it interesting that Supervisor Johnson has an issue with me giving a slight raise to my assistant, because Supervisor Johnson has two assistants, and basically, that make more than all of us, all of the other districts. I'm not going to go through it. This really, I didn't really realize this was going to come up. It's been done before. I know other supervisors have given raises. This is the first raise I gave. So I'm going to ask this Board to please approve the entire... A motion's made and a second?
Yes, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
So if you approve this, then you are voting against me giving my assistant a well-deserved raise?
If it were approved, that would be the action.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. That is not true. If we approve the motion that's in front of the Board, it's just to approve everything except this position, which is gotten far afield from what I was bringing it up for.
Well, explain why it was...
And then there will be a second motion on the other one. I just wanted to make it easier by getting rid of part of it and then just dealing with the one by itself.
In the past, have the, has it been taken apart? Has it been dealt, when other supervisors have given raises? Has it always been approved as part of your report?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus?
[coughs]
I'm sorry. Didn't mean to step on Supervisor Johnson.
No, that's fine. It's usually, it's usually done at budget time. With your indulgence, Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that I was going to make on the second. I'll do an amendment to my motion if that'll help at any.
I'll entertain your amended motion?
All right. My amended motion would say I was looking to possibly refer the setting of these types of salaries and raises to staff for recommendation based on, you know, education, time of grade, and time of services, to get a uniform pay scale for the departments that are affected. That was all I was looking for.
Mr. Chairman, did you, did you still want my input or after the motion?
I think I needed a second on the amendment.
That's correct. We need a second on the amendment.
Well, second the amendment.
Okay. Second the amendment. Now we can, further discussion. Mr. Hendrick?
I don't know. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus is correct that the supervisors and have been able to, if they can work within their budget, they have been able to shuffle monies how they believe is best fits their, their portion of the organization and how best they believe those monies can be utilized to serve their constituents. And that's been across the Board, and that's been consistent, that that actual activity can happen anytime during the year and doesn't necessarily have to come from the budget process. And the other thing, I think all the supervisors, if I'm not mistaken, have actually made adjustments with their employees from time to time through this process. And if I understand correctly from my staff, this is, we have been consistent in handling and reporting this activity. The confusion might have come from saying in the clerk's, it says, under the clerk of the board, that's a HR and finance designation. That's the way they've all been reported. It's not, it doesn't mean that this position was under the courts. But we've been consistent throughout my five years, going on six years, I believe, on how we've reported these and accomplished these requests by the supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. And I'd like to have a little input on this myself. I believe it's imperative that each district have the ability to exercise whatever uniqueness there is to that district. In my district, District Number One, I'm benefited by the fact that I'm on the third floor. I only have one assistant, but in total, I probably have 15 on the third floor that I can just immediately go and ask. So it's not the same as your district and District Number Three or District Number Five. So I certainly recognize the need to have a person that is very, so to speak, fleet of foot and highly intelligent to do those functions. So I certainly will not be voting for the amended motion.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
If I understand what Supervisor Johnson is trying to bring out in this discussion is the fact that each supervisor district is individual and their employees do have special, special talents and experience and education. And when, when one supervisor gives a pay increase to an administrative assistant, it does bring in to play a little competition with the other assistants. I mean, they see what everybody else makes. And, and so based on that, a couple of years ago, I gave my administrative assistant a 2% increase in her wages. I think it was like $400 a year. And, and now Supervisor Angus is well within her rights to give her assistant a 12% increase. And I, I don't know, are we going to go back and forth badgering with the assistants to try to come up with a fair way of doing this? And I think that's what Supervisor Johnson, if I'm understanding correctly, is trying to do, is to try to find some kind of rhyme or reason so that we don't have this battling back and forth between our individual staffs, so.
Thank you, Supervisor Bishop.
That's kind of what I see going on here.
So you want to make it a more general even? So the people who have two should only have one? I mean, we're going to go that far? I mean, I think it's worked pretty well here. And then we're tying the hands of future supervisors, not just us. I mean, I, I don't see, I mean, you're up here. See, this is the difference. I don't see that sort of competitiveness thing. Down in my district, my assistant acts 24/7 as me and the community. In fact, she went this weekend to two meetings that I asked her to go to on a Friday night. And she has legal background. So I thought that this was, and plus, again, it's an at-will political position. We could be gone two years. So that's all the reasons. Again, I didn't want to get into it. Historically, we have had that leniency to do, that leverage, not the leverage, leniency to do what we want to do within our budgets. Like I said, I've given back money, and that's all I'm going to say about that. And I hope you can approve this, just doing it the same way we've always done it.
Okay. Any further discussion? There being none, then I suggest a roll call.
Can you read the amended?
Yeah, read the amendment again, please.
Yep.
I don't have the exact amended, based on how quickly he said it, but basically, he wants to refer the salary recommendation for consideration of education tenure, et cetera. So he wants to approve everything else on that report except that one he would wanted referred to staff.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
She almost got it all. I probably have a tendency to speak too fast, but it was basically to refer it to staff, to set a range for, I wasn't even going to get into that it was the supervisors. I was going to get into that it was just for certain departments, a range of salaries, you know, commensurable with experience and that sort of thing. Could be time of grade, could be, you know, whatever their qualifications are, just so that we had an idea what range fell in, so that our people know exactly where they can go to in, in the pay scales. So it wasn't for this person. It was, there was no way that I was saying we're now Supervisor Angus or anybody came up under her name, you know, before budget time. So I thought that maybe if we had a set salary for assistants, you know, with a range in there, obviously, then we'd know where we were at. That's all I was trying to do.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Any further discussion? So a vote for the approval of this would set ranges as suggested by Supervisor Johnson. Is that correct?
It would send it to staff, they would refer it to staff to look at that, to set something up.
To staff, to set ranges.
Yes, sir.
But my, but my request would be denied.
That is correct. We're just voting on the motion.
Right. So a yes vote would mean that my request would be denied.
Would be denied. That's correct. All right. Let's proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Chair, I guess if you want, if it would make everybody more happy and we can approve the one that's in there, I was just thinking to get it to staff, if that would sit better with Supervisor Angus.
So if I'm listening, hearing Supervisor Johnson correctly, it's not so much about this particular item. He just, for future, wants administration to maybe set a range for supervisor assistants, for future. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, and they might come back saying, "We don't do it." But it's awfully tough when you come in as a new supervisor and you have, you know, you bring your people on it. It's good to have some kind of an idea of what the pay scale range is.
I'd be okay with that after, but not as early as this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make another amendment.
The Sheriff will recognize the second amendment.
Echo again. I would add on to approve the agenda item as stated, but refer to staff to come back with a recommendation on the possibly setting of a salary range for administrative assistants.
Okay. We have an amended motion?
I'll second.
An amended second. Okay. Now, further questions? Are there any further questions?
No.
Comments? Okay. All right. I would like to have a roll call.
Supervisor Angus?
Okay. So mine would go through. Then I'll say yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Supervisor, Chairman Watson?
Yes. Okay. The second amended motion is approved. That concludes the consent agenda. And I have a request to move item 46 to the front of the agenda from, from the regular agenda. Does that meet with the approval of the Board? Okay. Item number 46 is an item that I brought on to, for the discussion and possible action, to direct staff to research the flood control revenue allocation process and, in collaboration with the cities... with the cities, explore potential solutions that address the current trends that benefit both the cities and the county. The staff will provide documentation to the board for review at a future board meeting. What this does is initiate the discussion between the county and the cities. Our current trend of the flood control district is that of reducing numbers to the Mojave County's portion to the flood control district. I don't think it was anticipated when we made the original arrangements with the cities about four and a half years ago. And what I'm looking for is cooperation, for suggestions, and to open mind is that we approached this, that we approached it originally four and a half years ago with the thought of making it equitable to all. So now with the trend line being what it is, I'd like to readdress it in that same spirit. Mr. Walsh is ready to show us a short presentation. And then I have a number of folks that would like to speak to it.
Chairman Watson, members of the board. Flood control has done some research and basically looked at some of the, as was mentioned, the trends that have been occurring with the flood control funding. And when those trends became apparent to us, we felt it imperative to alert the board of those trends and to share our concern and seek direction from the board on how to proceed. I believe the intent of this item, as well as what would be flood control's intent, would be to just initiate the dialogue, be able to perform a public outreach to the cities and share our concerns and look for a mutually beneficial solution to this. What we've found, there's a couple of trends, if I may just put a couple of things up here. What we found, one being that in 2013, when the initial calculations and agreements were put in place, we were realizing about 7.8 million in tax revenues. Since that time this passed in 2018, we're looking at about 6.5 million in revenues. So we've decreased substantially from where we were at that time. Another trend, I don't know if that's really, there we go, that might be a little bit easier to read. Basically, you get the idea, throughout the years, the amount of money that we're seeing come in has decreased steadily over the years. The other trend that we've seen is the percentage difference, let's see, IT can help me out with that. In 2013, when the formula was initially approved, we were looking at about a 55%, 45% split in allocations, 55 going to the cities and 45 remaining with the county. And those allocations are based on assessments in the various locations. What we've seen over the years, though, is a widening of that trend to where in 2020, we're anticipating, basically, a 72% going to the cities and only 28 remaining with the county. And really, the concern for this is the ability for the flood control district to be able to perform our functions, to be able to provide the various projects within the different areas of the county and to provide the services that we provide. So again, this, our intent would be to begin that discussion with the cities. No action at this point, but just to start that discussion and try and find that mutually beneficial solution.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Questions for Mr. Walsh? Thank you.
Thank you.
Might want to sit pretty close to the podium, we may have questions for you. Okay, the first person I have signed up to speak to, Item 46, Charlie Cassins.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, Supervisors. It's always a pleasure to speak to you. I'm Charlie Cassins. I am a former city manager at Lake Havasu City, resident of Mojave County, and now retired, thank goodness. I signed up in opposition to this item mainly because I don't feel that it is necessary. It's not necessary for the Board of Supervisors to give direction to staff to go to the cities to sit down and talk about things of mutual interest. So I'm a little puzzled by that. Another thing that I wanted to clarify was when we sat down five years ago and we worked out this formula, it was what we thought to be the most equitable and fair to the cities and the county. At the time, it was way out of balance. And we thought by coming up with the assessed value AV formula, that it would become a living formula and that we knew that those numbers were going to change. There's a statement here in several places in the item that it was assumed that the relationship between the assessed values for county and cities would remain similar going forward. That's not my recollection. In fact, one of the reasons we came up with the formula that we did was that we knew those numbers were going to change and that it was most fair to have those flood control dollars going back to the areas where they're generated in the first place so that those monies can do the most good in the areas where it does the most good. So, Mr. Chairman, it's my opinion that this isn't broken, that the formula is working exactly as it was originally intended, and we shouldn't try and fix it because by trying to find, by taking money away from the cities and sending it to the county, certainly that does not benefit the cities. But keeping that money going into the projects where they do the most good and the assessed value numbers indicate that those monies are doing good in those communities, it is most fair to the greatest number of people in the county. And last time I checked, the cities where these improvements, these economic improvements are taking place, are in the county. So in essence, these improvements are improving Mojave County in general. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cassins, would you have that same opinion if in District Number One, there was a nuclear generating station being proposed and built to the value of about $1 billion? Would you still have that same opinion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, Toby Carter?
Great to be here. I'm Toby Carter. I'm the city manager in Bullhead City. Just a few years ago, we were here talking about flood control allocations, and I appreciated Mike and all the hard work that we put into that formula. I'm always willing to talk to Mike and talk about formulas and the rationale behind those formulas. So let's just throw that out there to say that a discussion is always appreciated and always welcome.
That's all we're looking for.
That being said, though, I do want to make a couple comments, if you would. And just knowing that the current allocation, we believe, is fair and equitable in the fact that those property tax dollars generated in the cities are put back into the city. So 80% of the dollars that our citizens pay in Bullhead City come back to the city. And we do things like on Silver Creek Road, we protect the roadway. On the Bullhead Parkway, we're protecting those investments that are made. So of the millions and millions of dollars of assessed valuation, we're protecting that valuation by getting these flood control dollars back. Putting those flood control dollars in the general county, I would agree, would be protecting those county assets as well. However, we have to do everything we can to convince you that we need as many dollars as possible to invest, to protect our investments that we're making in Bullhead City. I take a little bit exception with the packet and the fact that it says that valuations are being disproportionately created in the cities. I mean, that's what we're all striving for. Every day I show up to work, I try to create increased valuation, not only for our city, but for you, because your general county taxation benefits greatly when the cities are doing well. So that's one thing that, you know, when it's just valuation, in your packet, there were no real dollars. Whether it's 7.6 of total that you'd see on your CAFR or the 6.8 in the packet, I think what we really need to do is let's talk about the real numbers. So we could talk about valuation and show a spreadsheet that shows valuations in the cities are going up. We should applaud the cities for that. The county, it's a disproportionate share, yes, but still, if you look at the dollars, all of the money right now in this current formula being taxed in the unincorporated areas, all of it comes back to you. 20% of that value and those dollars being collected in the cities come back to you. So I don't think the formula needs to be adjusted all that much, albeit, you know, in Mike's office, I'm willing to listen and see what options and opportunity he has. But if you don't mind, when we have that discussion, let's also talk about what we're all doing with the money. Quite honestly, you're doing some transfers. You're paying health insurance with it. You're doing things that aren't directly putting it out into the county for flood control. So if we're going to talk about how we're all using this money and the greatest benefit for all of us, let's have that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Looking forward to your cooperation and good faith.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, Supervisors, Manager Hendricks. I'm Jess Knudsen. I'm the city manager in Lake Havasu City, and I really appreciate the time to come here before the board and have a discussion about a very important issue to Lake Havasu City and the county and the bulk of the cities in the county. As Manager Carter indicated, discussions are always welcome. So if there's anything that we can do in Havasu City and to generate discussions, to improve relationships, improve partnerships, anything we can do to increase the value of the benefits to our residents, we're all about that. But did want to speak to you a little bit today in terms of some of the concerns, as I learned about the pass and the formula conversations that took place four and a half years ago, what that means to Lake Havasu City and what it might mean if any adjustment to that formula would lessen the distribution to the cities. Those dollars that Lake Havasu City receives through the flood control district are very important to us. These funds are used to protect the health and safety of our residents and protect private property with projects that stabilize our washes, address erosion issues, storm cleanups after storms, and other similar projects that benefit the community, the city, and the county. We spend every dollar of these funds that we receive through the flood control district, and frankly, we could use more. This year, we received about $2.1 million of a distribution through the flood control district, and we're on target to spend $4.8 million of those funds in this fiscal year. These projects will be used for design, maintenance, and construction within the community. I'm learning that the discussions with regards to this formula might lessen the dollars that are going back to the cities and our taxpayers in Lake Havasu City. And if that's the case, I think that's a mistake. If the Board of Supervisors changes the formula and Lake Havasu City receives a smaller allocation, then we would need to use other taxpayer dollars to fund these type of projects, which means the taxpayers in Lake Havasu City would be taxed twice for the same amount of service. The existing formula is already skewed at the expense of the cities. The county receives 44% of all the dollars received by the flood control, excuse me, by the flood control district, and unincorporated county residents pay 29% of those revenues. Lake Havasu City pays 42% of the funds and receives 34% of the benefits. Bullhead City pays 17% of the funds and receives just 13% of the benefit. Kingman pays 12% and receives 9% of the benefit. Combined, the city taxpayer contribution of all the cities, we contribute 71% of the funds and 57% of the benefit. Another nuance with the formula, in Lake Havasu City, 99% of all the property taxes that are assessed in the city are actually collected. Because 80% of the property taxes recovered in unincorporated Mojave County, the balance is 20% that is attributed to bad debt that further skews the distribution models and impacts the dollars that go back to the cities and towns. So Lake Havasu City and the other cities in Mojave County, we're the economic engines for the county, and we have no problem with that. But our residents deserve their fair share of the taxes that they pay to be used to fund projects in our community. I respectfully ask that you vote no on this item, and let's move forward to bigger and more impending issues. I look forward to many more conversations moving forward, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. Greg Froslak?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Greg Froslak. I'm the city engineer for Lake Havasu City. And I'm going to spend a few minutes talking to you about just how important this funding is to our community. You may not be aware that Lake Havasu City has 71 miles of washes traversing through it, and these washes cross our paved roadways at 325 locations. These washes were manmade in the 1950s and 60s by the Army Corps of Engineers, who still maintain the jurisdiction over them today. They are, however, constructed on properties owned by the city, which makes us, the city, the owner. However, for us to go in and maintain them or do any capital improvements to them to protect our public and private properties, we're obligated to go through a very expensive and time-consuming permitting process with the Corps. The flood control revenue funding that we currently get is the single source of funding available to the city to address our ongoing issues with the washes. And since 2003, Lake Havasu City has utilized nearly $30 million to design and construct very important projects that make our community much, much safer. In the early 2000s, we worked very closely with our fire and police personnel to identify areas that became isolated during a heavy rain event due to our washes flowing full. In other words, if you're on the wrong side of a wash and you had a medical issue, our ambulances and our fire personnel could not even reach you. So that was obviously very important, our use of those funding. We developed a program to construct box culverts at strategic locations to ensure emergency access was available to all parts of the community during rain events, and we applied the flood control funding to this program over the course of several years. Although many of our intersections are currently unimproved and uncrossable during a rain event, we do now have emergency access to all parts of the city, if you know where they are. We then turned our attention to the wash banks. The more than 70 miles of washes that I mentioned previously are unprotected washes, manmade. They're subject to heavy erosion and significant head cutting every single time it rains. Many of these washes had eroded to the point where they were encroaching onto private property, placing private property walls and pools and sometimes even homes in jeopardy of structural As a result of that, the city completed a drainage master plan in 2008 to specifically evaluate the condition of the washes and identify the most critical areas of improvement. This next sentence is probably the most important one in my pitch here and one I'd like you to remember. That master plan in 2008 identified a total of 200 areas or wash reaches that needed our attention, some immediately. As a result, we then developed a wash, an annual wash bank stabilization program where we do as much as we can with our limited funding to try to chip away at those 200 projects. Over the last 10 years, we barely made a dent, even though we spent several million dollars every single year repairing wash banks to protect private property. Really, the moral of the story here is Lake Havasu City is not accepting this money and then trying to find projects to spend it on. Lake Havasu City has projects identified and programmed several decades into the future. A current example of that is our approved capital improvement program for this year and the next four years identifies only five areas, five projects, and we have over $12 million program. So we're underfunded already for our current allocation. So it'd be very difficult for the city to support something that would reduce our current allocation. I do have some information and some pictures I can leave here for you guys to look at that shows the potential for structural failure with private residences. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Froslak. If you'd like to give your documents to the clerk, we could. I was the one that brought this nasty issue to light. And I'd like to remind everybody that that it was five years ago that we cooperated in good faith and fair dealing with the cities. Up to that point, there had been a great deal of consternation over the allocations, and what we did then, we thought was very fair, and we look forward to only directing staff to look at and cooperate with the cities. So with that, I'm going to make a motion for to direct staff to research flood control revenue allegation process in collaboration with the city.
I understand that there's a lot of heartburn from the cities over this issue, but as I look at this motion, I see that it's only to discuss. Nothing will change if we can't come to mutual consideration. And with that in mind, and always trying to work together for collaboration to see how we can improve things, I second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Please, Chairman Watson. I just want to, again, we alluded to some of the history here, but I'd like to talk a little bit more about it. Prior to 2013, the cities were never told what that formula was. They weren't allowed to talk to the county manager. They were, you know, blocked out of any discussion. So when certain members of this board, Steve Moss, when he was here, we actually, it was a big issue when we were running for office. People were concerned. I gave my word that I would take care of it. It would get taken care of when we got elected. And I think on the first week I took office, and I think Toby Carter can attest to this, we got a meeting set up with the newly appointed county administrator, Mike Hendricks, and the cities, for the first time, found out how those figures were put together. And so I see that as my word and my bond to the people who elected me. It's only been four and a half, five years later. What would that say to the people and to the cities that now we're going to change our word? I agree with everything that the representatives from the cities said today, and so I think it's kind of a waste of time to have these meetings because ultimately, I'm going to vote no. So I'm just telling you that my vote for this will be no.
I understand your vote would be no, and I anticipated that. Most of your district is in with the city, boundaries of Bullhead City, whereas other districts have a different situation. And this is not for direct action. This is for, to direct staff to research revenue allocation. It doesn't mean that we're going to change anything. Let's open the dialogue, work in good faith. We did that five years ago. You had my vote and support for that five years ago, as I was chairman then. So, any further discussion? There being none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Supervisor Angus?
No.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yes. Thank you, and thank you for your patience, and I look forward to the discussion. Thank you very much. Now we'll go back to the regular process of the agenda. That would be public hearings, item number thirty-seven. Before we get into the public hearings, why don't we take a ten-minute break? Ten minutes.
Okay, the meeting will resume with public hearings. Item number thirty-seven. I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the approval of the placement of a lien on a dangerous building abatement in the amount of $6,515.72 in accordance with section one-ten of the International Property Maintenance Code for Cecil's Parcel Number 313-43-110 located at nine-four-five-oh North Diamond Bar Avenue, Kingman, Arizona. The owner of record is Charles Ennis Vaughn. I have no one signed up to speak to item number thirty-seven. Does anyone wish to speak to item number thirty-seven? There being none, then I'll close the public hearing for item number thirty-seven and chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. On to item number thirty-eight. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action to approve the placement of a lien for a dangerous building abatement in the amount of $5,957.66 in accordance with section of one-ten of the International Property Maintenance Code for Cecil's Parcel Number 319-20-159 located at sixteen-oh-three-six North Pierce Ferry Road, Dolan Springs, Arizona. The owner of record is Elise L. Stoffer. I have no one signed up to speak to item number thirty-eight. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to item number thirty-eight? There being none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson make a motion to approve item thirty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of item thirty-eight. Discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number thirty-nine. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the approval of the placement of a lien for a dangerous building abatement in the amount of $13,450.85 in accordance with section one-ten of the International Property Maintenance Code for Cecil's Parcel Number 227-18-137B located at eighteen-fifty El Rodeo Road, Fort Mojave, Arizona. The owner of record is Jackie R. Moore. I have no one signed up to speak to item number thirty-nine. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to item number thirty-nine? There being none, close the public hearing for item thirty-nine and entertain a motion.
Sure. Well. Okay. Motion for approval.
We have a motion for approval.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number forty. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action to approve the placement of a lien, a dangerous building abatement in the amount of $5,333.81 in accordance with section one-ten of the International Property Maintenance Code for Cecil's Parcel Number 306-16-015B, five-hundred South Esculia Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. Owners of record are Edward J. Guy, Jr., and Janet M. Guy. Care of Brian Strickland. I have no one signed up to speak to item number forty. Is there anyone in the audience wanting to speak to item forty? There being none, we'll close the public hearing for item forty and entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson, motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. On to item number forty-one. We'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the approval of the organization of the Short Creek Irrigation District in Colorado City area of Mojave County. We have one person signed up to speak to that item. Mr. Jason Dixon. Mr. Dixon? Good morning and welcome down to the other half of Mojave County.
Thank you, Chairman Watson. Chairman Watson and members of the board, my name is Jason Dixon. I represent the United Effort Plan Trust, a charitable trust that owns the majority of the land there. But before I address you, I just wanted to thank publicly Mr. Lautowski, his staff there at the Department of Public Works, as well as Mr. Esplin. All of them have been incredibly sharp, incredibly helpful, and a great resource, and we very much appreciate the work that they have done to help us get this petition fine-tuned to put up before you. As I mentioned, the United Effort Plan Trust is a charitable trust that owns the majority of the land in Colorado City. It also owns substantial surface water rights in the area. But unfortunately, to use those water rights on all the individual lots that we've now created through subdivision, it would take years of going through the Department of Water Resources and applying to be able to use those in different areas. However, if we have an irrigation district, we can sever and transfer those rights so that the individual lot owners who have fruit orchards and gardens and lawns can use that water to benefit their yards. And they can do it cheaply as opposed to using culinary water that's already been treated. And so that's our purpose in creating that irrigation district, so that we can allow these people to use water cheaply. As you may have noticed, we're requesting a very different election procedure. Under the statute, typically what happens is once the board approves the district, there's a vote by the landowners to approve it and appoint the initial directors. However, in this case, the UEP Trust is the only landowner, and so those election procedures would be wasteful. They require things like getting three election judges, canvassing the vote, sending out ballots, that sort of thing. So we're requesting that the petition that's filed by the only landowner in this case serve as a de facto vote in this case for both the approval of the district and the appointment of its board of directors. Now, this isn't without precedent. This has been done three times that I know of, and we're modeling it after the three times that it's been done, once in Apache County, once in Graham County, and once in Navajo County. And so we believe that there's precedent for this, and it's certainly well within the discretion of the board of directors to do, or excuse me, the board of supervisors to do that. We're confident that this will benefit the residents in Mojave County, and we ask for your support in this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Questions for Mr. Dixon? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to item number forty-one? There being no one else, I'll close the public hearing for item forty-one and entertain a motion for the approval.
Chairman Watson, I'll make the motion for approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Dixon, good luck.
Just one point, now that it's been approved, I believe on the backup, there's a resolution and an order, is that correct?
There it is.
So that'll then be signed by the chairman?
Okay.
Okay. Just to make sure we got that. And then we'll forward it on, I believe it's got to be recorded, is that correct?
I believe that, yes.
Okay.
Lots of people apply that. They're not known as good.
Okay. So we'll work with the chairman and the clerk of the board to get that done and then forward it on to you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Esplin.
Thank you. Yeah. Any questions? Ginny, do you have any questions about that? Okay, thank you.
Okay, on to item number forty-two. We'll open the public hearing, discussion for possible action regarding the establishment of the Malibu Road Improvement District located in section seven, Township Twenty-North in Golden Valley. I have several people signed up to speak to this item. I don't think I slaughtered it too bad, did I?
You did fine, Mr. Watson.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board and Mr. Chairman. My name's James Consolato. I live at three-zero-two-four Malibu Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. I'm here this morning to speak first at the request of Mr. Stan Lundstrom, who due to a conflicting appointment is regrettably unable to attend in person today. I am also here on behalf of myself and the majority of the residents in the proposed Malibu Improvement District, Walnut Creek Estates, Golden Valley. Stan Lundstrom was the resident who took the initiative to interact with District Supervisor Bishop, District Four, and the Mojave County Public Works Department in order to launch the signature petition effort required by the applicable Arizona revised statutes to establish the Malibu Improvement District. The majority of the residents in the district wished to thank the county for their assistance and encouragement. We'd like to let the supervisors know that a small committee of residents invested a great deal of time, many hundreds of hours, in many months, and also money. Besides the price of the bond, we doubled that cost, and Mr. Lundstrom and I footed that expense from our own pockets. So all of that effort, in all of that effort, we sent out several mailers, held several community meetings, one of which was also conducted with county personnel from the Public Works Department. And we went diligently from door to door with our team, which also included a resident notary. The majority of the residents and property owners, including one of those property owners, Mr. Scott Dutton, thinks the establishment of this district is a win-win proposition for the following reasons. Number one, the Malibu corridor will be a safer place to drive and live. And what I mean, I'm using the old adage is that this is where the rubber hits the highway if we have pavement, opposed to the adage spinning your wheels in the dust. Number two, there will be a significant improvement of air quality due to a reduction of dust from the current dirt road. This improvement in air quality will greatly enhance the lives of those residents who currently suffer from respiratory issues and may represent a significant medical savings for them. Number three, a paved surface will greatly reduce the cost of wear and tear and vehicle maintenance for the residents on Malibu and other residences in the Walnut Creek Estates that may use that road. The residents may also, number four, the residents may also anticipate an increased market value in their property. Five, and last but not least, the paved road will eliminate the annual cost to the county of grading and reduce the annual cost of road maintenance, adding a new, a new and paved road paid for by the residents at the low cost of approximately thirty-five cents a day if they'd pay it off, looking at it on a daily basis. On behalf of the aforementioned majority of the property owners in the Malibu corridor, we ask that the Mojave County Board of Supervisors would continue to vote in favor of this designated improvement district, and we thank you for your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, board. My name is Jerry Lewis, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. Jim took most of the points that I was going to bring up, but I'd just like to echo every single one of them, and I don't want to waste your time and go through every single one again. But I'll add one small one that I thought of, is I sit on my front porch at twenty-nine-fifty-five West Malibu Road. I watch my neighbors take walks up to the mailbox, and as a car drives by, you know, the dust is flying, you know, and they're all turn and try to get away from that. So that there, the improvement alone, will help the neighborhood, you know, to reduce the dust so where you can walk a little bit, you know, safer, if that's what you want to call it. But again, I won't waste your time, and I'll echo everything that, you know, Mr. Consolato said, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Good morning. I'm Bill Schleter, and I live at thirty-eighty-seven West Malibu in Walnut Creek Estates. When I purchased my home on Malibu in two thousand and ten, one of the factors in making that decision was the supposition that Malibu would be the next road to be paved after already paved McConaco. And the project was to be paid by the county. Well, that didn't happen. Yes, we still bought the house knowing it was on a dirt road. We discovered and adapted to the road dust challenges as best we could. But now we have hope in seeing that initial supposition become reality, thanks to the majority of neighbors living on Malibu wanting to see the improvement and even pay for its completion. I was involved in meeting with many neighbors asking for their approval and moving this project forward. Every homeowner I met was entirely enthusiastic about the project. I stopped meeting with neighbors when we met the targeted number of signatures. Through other means, I have learned a few objections, and which I'd like to state and give my opinion. People will drive faster on pavement than dirt. For the most part, Malibu has been maintained well enough that if people want to exceed the limit, they can and do speed on the existing road. Nothing will change in that regard, in my opinion, no more speeders and no less. A self-made expert or two in road construction cite possible problems due to the after-effects of rain. The road improvement will be constructed by professional engineers. I don't expect any negative issues in the construction of the road. Some people say they can't afford ten to twelve dollars a month, per month, until the project is fully paid. No idea about personal expenses, but I suspect home value and better health, along with the ability to open windows, maybe save some utility savings, would counter the additional temporary expense involved. And lastly, some people enjoy living on a dirt road. I can't comment on that one. The project meets the wishes of far more than those that oppose it. The project improves our community, increases our home values, and provides a healthier environment. The county doesn't need to pay for it and reduces its Walnut Creek maintenance cost. To me, that sounds like a win-win proposition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. John Van Engelen?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. I am John Van England. I live at thirty-four-ten West Malibu Road. Between Tony Joe and Apache, we're the residents that receive the brunt of the damaged roads after the washes overflow and all the rain accumulates, and it comes down that area, it's almost like a river. And the maintenance has been a problem in that lower portion of Malibu. The erosion over the four years that I've been a property owner there is, and the maintenance of the road has actually lowered the road. And this is due to, after speaking with the county road supervisor, it became clear that the required fill dirt to bring that stretch of road back to an operable condition is being withheld due to cost and availability. I realize costs have gone up, and our taxes for the maintenance apparently are not covering the cost. And I think with it being paid, that it's gonna reduce the cost to the county, so that's a win for the county. I also believe the dust from the traffic and the damage to the vehicle suspensions and our vehicles will be greatly reduced. Addressing what Mr. Schleter and Jim spoke about, which is, you know, the negatives that people are concerned about the speeding and so on, Jim's done extensive work, speaking to the sheriff's office and trying to get law enforcement out there, and we know they're stretched out real thin because it's a county issue, but it's not going to change, whether it's on a paved road or on a dirt road. So I think that's really not an issue. The dust from the traffic and the, like I say, is the air quality and the health concerns for all residents. As one who has a wife, my wife has emphysema, this paving would greatly improve the air quality for her and all residents included. Please approve this paving project. A yes vote is a healthy vote for us. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to item number forty-two? Before I close the public hearing, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank you folks for your hard work and diligence putting this application together. It's a step in progress for each and every one of you, and congratulations on your hard work. With that, I'll close the public hearing on item number forty-two and entertain a motion for the establishment of Malibu Road Improvement District.
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor Bishop?
I think this is great that the citizens that live on Malibu Road have taken the effort to bring this to us today, but I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that I did receive two letters in opposition of that, and I think the letters were given to each of the supervisors. So we do have those letters, and we did read those, but I think this is a win-win for the county and for the citizens that live on that road, and the expense over the next ten years is something that I think that the people want, they understand, and they can afford. And so with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you and good luck, folks. Item number forty-three. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action regarding the approval of updated sheriff's fees. And I see we have the sheriff in our audience. Good morning and welcome, Sheriff Schuster.
Well, good morning. Thank you, Chairman Watson, members of the board. Just to kick this off, I want to be clear that this is nothing that I personally initiated. I was asked to review our fees, and looking at the fees, since they have not been reviewed for some time, we did change some. We raised some. I think they're very equitable. The intent is to simply pay for service that we're providing. Side note, a majority of our fees are mandated by statute. Those fees have not changed, so I'm comfortable with the recommendations. the recommendations that I'm making to the board, that these fees are adequate and appropriate.
Questions for the sheriff?
No questions. I've looked at the fees, and they look fine.
Look quite appropriate.
I have questions, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
Sheriff, a lot of this is probably brought up by me. I keep questioning the fees. You have down here, vehicle use fee per hour. Do we rent out our vehicle by the hour, or is that just included with the deputy?
We don't rent the vehicles out, Supervisor Johnson. That's the off-duty rate included with the deputy.
We have, I thought there was two of them. One says marked vehicle use fee, $10 per hour, which you want to go to from 982?
Correct.
Okay, and then, the one that I have a problem with, we're not running contracts with other governments, because obviously I'm guessing that the only people we contract are deputies to are other, like DPS for road work.
Supervisor Johnson, that is part of it. We do allow our deputies to work off-duty details that are outside of government agencies upon approval of myself, and that's something that we've been doing for many, many years.
Okay, I guess, but when that's done, do you sign a contract on behalf of the county, and then the sheriff is paid, or the money goes to your department and to the finance, and then finance cuts the checks back to you and to your deputies?
Supervisor Johnson, at this point, no. The checks for the officer or the deputy's individual work is paid directly to them by the vendor. Mojave County receives a separate check for vehicle use.
Okay, I guess that is where I have my concerns. I don't believe, you know, what people are doing when they contract with the department, and obviously I'm not telling you anything, just in case anybody's wondering where my questions are coming from, what they want is they want a black and white car with the siren and a light, and they want a guy in a uniform with a gun and a badge. And at that, I don't believe that we're getting our full burden back, and we're also shortchanging our deputies, because now that money they would be making won't help with their retirement. I just think the liability issue is what concerns me, because if one of our deputies gets hurt out there, we're gonna be the ones, you know, eventually pay for it, or if one of our deputies, you know, gets into a scuffle or whatever happens, he's doing something off-duty with our full authority, then we're still liable for him. That's my concern, that when we do it, we should get full-burdened rates of time and a half for our deputies, plus whatever the county would make, because if something happens to our deputy, we lose him. Plus, we paid for his training, we paid for the car, we paid for, you know, everything he has. Those are my concerns for the board. I just think that we should be having contracts that run through the county for liability purposes. That's all I had, Sheriff.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Well put on some of your thoughts there. Sheriff Schuster?
If I may, Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, point well made, and that's something that's been in the discussion for many years. The reason we currently operate the way we do is to not put an additional burden on the county. We do quite a bit of off-duty work. If this were paid directly to the county, it does go into the individual retirement accounts, which is great for the deputies. I would support it if we want to change to that measure. But with that understanding, the contribution rates for the county will go up, and although the vendor's paying it long-term, we're gonna get, we're gonna go down that road where we're having higher pension employees going out, and we've seen what that has already done to us. It's been very impactful. So I would not oppose making this 100% directly through the county. It certainly would make it easier on me. I'm just thinking, for cost savings, if we stay the way we're doing it now, the county would benefit more.
I'd recommend.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. I'd recommend that you give some thought to these issues, and possibly come back with a solution at some later point in time, after you discuss, possibly with Coral Lloyd, our planning director, and our county manager, Hendrix. On this particular issue, I would say have those discussions and then possibly bring it back later, but I'm certainly in favor of approving your fees today.
Chairman Watson, thank you, and we will do that. This has been a kind of a hot topic for many years, and we have looked at it from all angles, but I'd be happy to speak with Ms. Lloyd and see if we can't come up with some solid ground there.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 43? There being done, I'll close the public hearing for item number 43, and entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Make a motion. I'll second the motion for the approval of the updated sheriff's fees. Any further discussion? There being done, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carried.
No, because of liability issues.
Okay. Well, noted. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Onto item number 44, under the regular agenda. Discussion, possible action for the adoption of the Board of Supervisors Resolution 2018-046, approving Davis Camp 10-Year Master Plan, which will guide Davis Camp's growth and development and improvements for the next 10 years.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, members of the supervisors. Good morning, Hal Barton, Mojave County Parks.
Morning, Hal.
We're excited to bring a 10-Year Master Plan for Davis Camp to the Board of Supervisors today. And I do have a short PowerPoint that I'll go through real quick. We'll keep this very short, to the point, that pretty much goes over the direction we took in coming up with this 10-year plan. If you look on the screen, the first picture you see for Davis Camp 10-Year Master Plan, there's one item that I do kind of want to point out. During our research, we've been able to find tremendous history for Davis Camp and, as well as for Mojave County. We blended in a picture that was taken in 1948 of Davis Camp to what it currently looks like today. During our research for the Davis Camp Master Plan, we have a lot of pictures that we've gone a handle of, and the pictures were given to us from the Bureau of Reclamation, and they show tremendous history down there. But one of the most interesting facets that we discovered on these photographs from 1946, '47, '48, were pictures of the Davis Dam employees that were staying at Davis Camp, recreating up at Walupi Mountain Park. And it was very interesting, though, to note that 70 years ago, that both parks were tied in together, as they are today. And I just kind of wanted to point that out. So why update the master plan? Well, the 2009 last plan that was approved by the Board of Supervisors, we noted that really did not align with the Bureau of Reclamation, National Park Service goals and directions, and had conflicting programs. We also have noted that there are new trends in Arizona recreation, activities that would include your hiking, biking, jogging, as well as environmental nature studies and non-motorized watercraft. Mojave County Parks is planning for the future. We're addressing decades of deferred maintenance as we speak. We're looking, we've looked at customer service-oriented elevated lodging standards, managing the park growth, public safety, as well as public partnership. We also had conducted meetings with the Bureau of Reclamation and National Park Service, who are part of the lease holders and title holders of Davis Dam. And we do want to work together with them, continue working with them, in terms of their missions, lining up with the Mojave County Parks missions. Finally, we are wanting to look at creative problem-solving solutions, and we want to pretty much mitigate user conflicts. We want to separate day use versus camping, want to increase the recreational opportunities for Mojave County residents. We want to just overall increase the customer service experience that guests have, and of course, increase the revenue generation opportunities that can be put back into the park. The Davis Camp Master Plan, we've developed into six areas. It's gonna be called Park Central, North Beach, South Beach, the island, Davis Camp East, and Davis Camp East, that's the land that is directly east of Highway 68 and south of McCormick, as well as the Davis Camp Park entry. So what we got planned for North Beach, and please understand, this is a 10-year plan, so this does encompass a lot of vision. As we're looking at implementing cabins up on North Beach, reservation only for Long Beach area, we have looked into an event menu that'd be like for small weddings or small get-togethers or parties. We're looking at programmed recreation sport courts, as well as the Arizona Herdies Trail, which have a spur that would tie into that for North Beach. The park entry, we're looking at having a new visitor's center, and in that visitor's centers, we would include a lot of the pictures I just spoke of, showing the tremendous history of Davis Camp. We're looking at redesigning the entry exit for safety. We're also looking at improved operations and administrative facilities. The Park Central would be a new community building, here again for weddings or for other events or conferences. We're looking for event venues. We are recommending renovated playgrounds for the guests. We're looking at active adult fitness courts. That would be, your pickleball would be, for example, of that. We're looking at the Herdies Trail Loop, as well as additional cabins for the central area. As for the island, we're looking, this would be primarily a day-use area. We have to take into consideration the high-water mark, as well as the rivers, so we kept it only to day use. It would include parking lots, non-motorized waterway. We are promoting, or I should say designing, it'd be like an additional waterway that would be along the east portion of the island. It'd be more like a lazy river for park guests to be able to use. It would also open up additional beach areas. We also will be promoting, and this is in conjunction with the Bureau, nature, habitat-based recreation, which would be, i.e., birding, as well as nature, as well as looking at possibly a major beach vent opportunities. And that, in there, that's your sand volleyball courts. Due to the location and proximity with the river, it'd be kind of neat, would awesome for us to see events that'd be like volleyball tournaments, or something like the Manhattan Beach Pro-Am, have something out on the beach there, which would be utilized for all the Mojave County residents. The South Beach area is an area that we're really looking at flexible usage. We will be improving the parking lots. We do, are exploring multiple public-private partnering, of which we would partner with ventureships that they could use there for future design ideas, whether it be use of the pavilion. And we're just open, because a lot of this that we're promoting is going to cost a lot of funds, and so we're looking at partnering. The Davis Camp East land, we're kind of keeping that more passive. We're looking at promoting an RV park, because I can tell you, RV park right now, for this past winter season, we're pretty much 100% full, with tremendous numbers of snowbirds, so it'd be nice to offer additional spaces. We're also looking at non-motorized trail systems, trailheads, as well as tying into the Arizona Herdies Trail. And finally, again, we'd be looking at possible public partnering opportunities for that area. So one of the questions that would be brought up, we want funding mechanisms, we'll be exploring for the development of this plan. And here again, let's understand, this is going to be a 10-year plan. But pretty much the most important one is, it is our goal to reinvest the park revenues that we're currently generating back into the park. We'll then be also exploring public partner partnerships, and for example, the Regatta partnership with Marnell Gaming, with Davis Camp, you know, that has worked out very well. We do have partnerships for jet skis down there, and we'll be exploring other areas for partnering as well. We'll continue also looking for grants, potential grant opportunities for development of this 10-year master plan, as well as establishing possible stakeholders' fundings, possibly use of your groups, you know, i.e. Rotary Park or something, that would, how the Rotarians would assist in terms of funding for ideas for Davis Camp. And here again, a lot of this, just remember, this is over many period of time, but in terms of the goals and directions, let's talk about the timing. We're looking at the park infrastructure as the primary concern right now. We're dealing with infrastructure that is very, very deteriorated. That is our water system, you know, our sewer system. And because of that, we are constantly sinking money into the park. There's, we do have a new 80,000-gallon water tank that just was constructed. We have a ranger station remodel that has just been completed. We are in the process of renovating the existing lift station, the sewer lift station, as well as we've renovated both the well 1 and well 2. So the infrastructure is very key. We're estimating that we still have probably three to four more years of infrastructure work down there to do. The partnership opportunities, once the board does approve this plan, we'll start immediately going out and putting together RFPs, RFQs, to seek out potential investors who would want to come and partner with it. The island development would be the first phase that we'd like to see development of it. We estimated that would start probably in 2020 and go for at least one or two years. Park Entry, 2011. Park Central, 2022. North Beach, '24 to '25. South Beach, '25 to '26, and then the Davis Camp East would be the last one, '26 to '28. And with that, I will open it up for questions to the board.
Questions for Mr. Burton?
I have a question, Chairman Watson. This is a really exciting plan, a 10-year plan, and I didn't hear anything about our community parks. And I know this is just a plan for Davis Camp, but I'm concerned if we're putting so much excitement and money into Davis Camp, and of course, Walupi Mountain Park will need to grow, I have to ask, what's in the plans for our community parks, because right now, they're looking a little bleak.
Yes. Supervisor Bishop, very good question. This is the first of three different master plans that we'll be bringing to the board. We're gonna have, we're in the process, as we speak, doing one for Walupi Mountain Park, and we'll be doing a master plan for all the community parks as well. And so we do understand, but let's remember, the biggest challenge Mojave County Parks is confronted with is funding for the community parks. And in order to fund for the community parks, we need to ensure that our primary revenue generator is taken care of, which will allow us to have the monies for future improvements to the community parks.
Yes, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that my constituents that are listening to this didn't think that all the money is going to the bigger parks, and they're, once again, being left behind. So it's very nice to hear that there's a plan coming up for the community parks.
Yes. We are in the process of the Mojave County Parks recreditation for national certification. In that process, we are required to have a master plan that addresses all the parks. At that point, all the community parks will be included.
Okay, and this plan is more like a wish list. Am I correct?
It's not only a wish list, it's a vision.
Where we'd like to go, what we'd like to do.
Right. Supervisor Bishop, it's a vision, how we'd foresee seeing Davis Camp develop over the next 10 years. It also, we need to use it in conjunction with the lease that we do or granted from the Bureau of Reclamation, as well as National Park Service. It is those two agencies having requests and through parks to see what is our vision. Are we developing park in such a direction that they see suitable as well?
Okay, thank you. It's very nice.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We've been speaking off the record for a long time about Davis Camp and all the possibilities, and this is a great presentation, a great start. And I'm excited about the idea of public-private partnerships. I have been approached by some private companies and some of the casinos about the possibility of working together. And that is the future. That's how we're going to have to do it. Davis Camp, as I understand it, is our biggest money generator for our parks, to take care of the other community parks as well. And so that, their success would be a success for the whole county. So I appreciate this. I really like it. county. So, I appreciate this. I really like it. I was hoping that Mayor Brady would be here, because Mayor Brady, I say that this looks the way it does today because of the vision all those years ago of Tom Brady, who was the Parks Director, and did all that work and worked with the Bureau of Reclamation and Parks, and he has some great ideas too, to work together with Bullhead City, and then the Heritage Trail, and the Peace Trail that's coming all around. So, there's all these wonderful things happening in Mojave County and around Mojave County, so I think this is a great start. I did get a comment from a constituent when they read in the paper that we were going to be talking about this, that they wanted to make sure that a portion of the area designated as a no-powerboat area for fishing. The fishing dock is useless when powerboats and personal watercraft can speed by over fishing lines, so I just wanted to put that out there. I don't remember hearing about it in your thing, maybe it is something that you're thinking about. People do like fishing off there.
Supervisor Angus, very good point. We have actually, are very well aware of the powerpoint, the powerboats and the speeds along the river. The Bureau of Reclamation has actually spoken to us. It is even their ultimate thought that it should be nice if they could slow the speed limit down. I'm not sure if there would be a no-wake zone, but here again, Mojave County Parks, really all we would be able to do is support a direction of that. That would here go, have to go before the Coast Guard, Army Corps, as well as the Bureau of Reclamation, but it is definitely something that they have been speaking about.
Any further discussion? There being none, let's entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-46, approving the Davis Camp Park 10-Year Master Plan.
And I will second that.
Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried. You've got your 10-year plan. Thank you. Onto item number 45. Discussion, possible action for the reconsideration of item number seven from the April 2nd, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting, which recommended the approval of an application for special event liquor license for Music Heels, Inc., 8275 Oatman Highway, Kingman, Arizona, 86413. The date's April 26th through the 29th. This is brought to us by Supervisor Jean Bishop. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you Chairman Watson. I brought this item back at the request of the applicant as he was unable to attend the last meeting where we denied his application. The applicant would like to have an opportunity to tell the board what he's doing with an event that's coming up in Golden Valley, and with that, I'd like to make a motion that we reconsider this item.
We have a motion for reconsideration. I'll second the motion for reconsideration, and let's hear from the applicant.
My name is Ray Stelges, out of Bullhead City, aka Crazy Ray. I'm currently taking care of-
Chairman Watson, I'm sorry, and I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt, but if we could vote first on the reconsideration, and then if the reconsideration passes, then we can go on to the next item, at which point we can listen to this gentleman talk about it.
Okay. And thank you for the correction. We have a motion for reconsideration.
And a second.
Discussion for reconsideration. There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
And Supervisor Johnson?
Supervisor Johnson, can you clarify if your vote was yes or no, please?
Supervisor Johnson?
Can you hear me?
We can. Now, can you clarify if your vote is a yes or no for reconsideration, please?
No on reconsideration.
Okay, we have a no for the reconsideration. So, at this point, item number 45 is a no vote.
Is that correct? That's correct.
Now, do we proceed to item 45B, based on that?
It hasn't been, the board decided not to reconsider, to bring it back for discussion.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we've covered item 46. We've had our discussion and the legal position on the Central Arizona Project. Onto item number 48, discussion, possible action for the authorization of the staff to submit application for the agricultural water entitlement and associated fees to the Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District to be funded from the general fund contingency. Mr. Hendrix, would you care to address that?
Mr. Chairman, I can answer any questions. This is the next step. We are, it's my understanding, we are in escrow with a piece of property. For what needs to occur is the previous owner has the contract for the water, for the 30 acre feet of water per year. What we need to do is make application for the transfer of that contract into Mojave County's name.
Any questions for Mr. Hendrix? I'd like to make a motion for the authorization of staff to submit application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 49, our last item for the agenda. Discussion, possible action, provide direction for staff on the request from the Clean Elections Commission on their request for the BOS auditorium on June 29th, 2018, October 8th, 2018. I'll make a motion for approval. And second, questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and those in the audience, who spent a delightful morning.